No, sweet.
Okay. Like to welcome. Two thousand and twenty-one December meeting of the Rush Town Planning Board. And. Well, have Shelley take a role?
Member McPherson. Member Werther.
Here.
Member Strack.
Here.
Deputy Chair Werner.
Here.
Chairman Sweet.
Here. Having done that. We'll take a look at last month's minutes. And does anybody have any corrections or changes they want to make?
I have none. I looked them over and it's been pretty complete from what I recall the meeting was.
I have none.
All right. All right. So I'll make the motion that we. Accept the meeting minutes as written for the regular meeting of the Rush Town Planning Board dated November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Member McPherson. Member Werther.
Hi.
Member Strack.
I'm staying.
Deputy Chair Werner.
Hi.
Chairman Sweet.
Hi. Okay. In a few minutes, so we'll open our first public hearing. For application twenty twenty-one dash fourteen P. By Crown Castle. Requesting a site plan. Review and special permit for the installation of the disnet tenants at the existing cell tower located at fifty-nine seventy-seven East Ten Red Road, Rush. New York one four five four three, property zone CC. Is anybody here to represent? Crown Castle tonight?
Yes, hi, hi, my name is Richard Zajek. I'm representing Crown Castle.
Okay. Hello, Richard.
Hello. I can. Give you a quick rundown on the project. I don't know how you guys want to do things, but I can just add a little more detail to it if that's okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, so as you said. Proposed dish wireless antenna installation to the existing cell tower. More specifically, Dish is proposing to install three antennas at the eighty-nine foot level of the existing one hundred and twenty-foot monopole. There's no, no ground compound expansion associated with the scope of work. No tower height increase either. The project does classify as an eligible facilities request based on section sixty-four nine of the rules of the FCC.
Uh, Richard, do you have anything further?
Uh, no, that's pretty much the, the high-level overview. Of the project itself, Dish is, you know, in the process of building a network across pretty much the entire country. This is, it's, it's in its infancy. Obviously, there, you know, many other installations very similar to this going on across the Northeast and across the whole country.
You saw Todd, our town engineers, a two-page sheet with a number of bullet points. Things that he was asking. Have you seen the sheet and have you like taken?
I have not.
Okay.
We send it to you right now.
All right, so Shelley is gonna email it to you right now, Richard, so you have.
Okay. I'm, I'm more than happy to talk, talk through it if you guys want to, you know, discuss.
Anyway, I guess she's gonna send to me. When you get, when you get the copies from Shelley, let us know.
Okay.
Yeah, supposedly this was copied to you. I'm not sure how. That you're listed as, as a CC. So I don't know if it would have come by hard copy mail or.
I just sent it to you.
Okay.
Let us know when you get it.
I will. Here we go. Okay, I'm opening it up right now.
So Jeff, you want me? Yeah, so Richard, this is Jeff Warner, so we just, uh, we'll start going down through the comments and we'll kind of take them one. Uh, you're the only application tonight, so we have enough time to go over this, or we would have made time anyway. Um. Over number one, um, but let's go right to number two. Basically, to explain the intent of the application, and you kind of just did a brief overview of that. And then. The antennas, the ice bridge improvement, structural report completed for the project, and all utility construction outside the fence, including restoration of town property. So why don't we take, take them kind of segment by segment? So let's start with the ice bridge improvements. What can you tell us about that?
That's basically just a coordinating with, you know, safety regulations, making sure that is up to date, you know. In line with the cables that are gonna be running up to the new antennas, to the, to the ground equipment that's gonna be, you know. Installed within the existing compound. That's more just a safety thing. Those are improvements that are necessitated by the scope of work. Just to, you know, ensure safety standards are met with our construction team.
Can you explain to me what an ice bridge is?
From what I've been, from what I have been told, it's just kind of a protection for the cables that are running up from the ground cabinets that are gonna be installed. In the compound up to the monopole and going up. They're, they're right at the base of the pole. Essentially, it just kind of is, is something that, and so that the cables aren't just holding, you know, aren't loose, they aren't just kind of floating around in no man's land. It's kind of a, a structure that holds everything in place so that, you know. Say, for example, if big gust of wind comes, they don't sway or anything like that. It's something, again, kind of a safety measure that, that is necessitated by. You know, safety standards and regulations that have been put in place.
All right, there was the. I was thinking if maybe it had something to do with the ice coming off the antennas and hitting the equipment boxes below.
Well, that's, I mean, that's part of it too. I mean, again, just a safety thing, something that kind of protects the, the cables and the equipment. So that, that is part of it, yeah.
Okay. Next segment, structural report completed for the project. It was done by Crown Castle. We have a, uh, some very in-depth. Report dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and I don't know if Todd was actually looking for, for. I guess he, just explain, explain that report if you could a little bit from Crown Castle. Uh, I went. Talks about the pole and the load on the pole and, and, and the entire structure of the, of the monopole.
Sure. The, I mean, that's something that we do for any type of installation, whether we're adding antennas to a tower or swapping antennas. It's a report that we have to run, obviously, to make sure that the tower can support the, the proposed construction. Um, there's a lot of, as you kind of alluded to, there's a lot of engineering that goes into those, a lot of detail and everything. Um, obviously, it's. I would say the most important piece of, of calculations that we do whenever we have a new project, any new project coming in, we obviously want to make sure that. The, the tower is gonna, you know, meet all the safety standards and isn't, you know, gonna have any sort of structural issues.
And the next segment in that, and number two statement is all utility construction outside the fence, including restoration on town property. So there's gonna, you've got to get the, the cable, the fiber cable to the monopole. From utility poles, so you're gonna be going underground. Uh, and there's a sidewalk there. Just give us a little info on how you're gonna do that.
We're bringing in power too, I believe, in the opposite direction.
Correct, uh, correct, yeah. I'm looking at. Right now, I'm looking at sheet number A-one on the drawings. I don't know if you guys have the drawings in front of you, just kind of going across. The little bit kind of behind the monopole there. Big picture, that's something that obviously we can, I can coordinate with our construction manager. This is typically just a, a bore underground to make those connections. Um, and that's something that we can obviously, you know, coordinate with you all to make sure that restoration. Um, we fully understand, you know, what you guys are expecting from a restoration standpoint. And, um, you know, go out there with our construction manager and meet and look at the site if that's something you guys want to do, but more than happy to make sure that, that. You know, everything is back returned as close as possible to the way it currently sits out there. Certainly not looking to, to dig up any holes and leave them uncovered. That's not our intent at all. So if you guys have concerns about that, that's totally understandable, and we're more than willing to work with you to, to make sure that everything gets put back together. Just as close, if not exactly the same as how it is out there.
You know about other. Already there, going from the monopole out to the telephone pole. And how do you ensure that you don't run into those or damage those?
I'm sorry, say that again, the, the connections that are already there, the lines that are already underground, is that what you're asking?
Earth lines already running underground, presumably in about the same area.
Yeah, that's all, that's all mapped out by, by our engineers and our, and our construction teams. They've got detailed maps in terms of, you know, who's already there, what conduits are already underground. We basically just follow that same path. Um, there's not trying to reinvent the wheel here. Obviously, there's, you know, one point of connection really. Um, and, and this does not involve any sort of new. Path in any other direction, you know, outside of what, what, what's already there. So our engineers do all those calculations, and if there's conduit there, I'm just looking again at sheet number A-one. Um, there is proposed conduit there to make sure that, that everything's protected. Um, and, and we've got that all mapped out to make sure that, that nobody gets cut and nobody gets, you know, disrupted when, when this sort of installation takes place.
Yeah. Down to that, Richard, also that, uh, in New York State, before any digging takes place, you have to call the eight-one-one, the Underground Utility Service.
Right, right.
On map and, and, and detect any lines also and, and mark that out.
Right.
Days before, prior to digging. I believe. Is, is that right, ten days?
I believe that's right. Yeah, we're, that's very familiar, obviously, with, with the locating call and those in and making sure everything's marked ahead of time, for sure. So that's something that obviously we'll, we'll definitely take care of.
Red Richard, this is the town attorney, and I just had one question on this subject matter. Uh, in terms of the amount of time that it would take to run those new fiber optics, is it, is it a day? Is it a week? You know, what's the overall length of disturbance of that area?
Um. I have not, I don't. Full disclosure, I'm not a hundred percent. I don't think it's more than just a day or two to make those connections. Once everything gets planned out, really, the big bulk of our time. Is spent planning, calling in the locates, making sure everything, we got everything planned out to know where we're going, what we're doing, what connections are being made, all that sort of stuff. The actual construction itself. Is not long at all. Um, it's, it's something that can happen, and I think just, just a day or two, really. It's not an extended period of time. Uh, once all the coordination ahead of time is taken care of.
So you actually do underground. Drilling, horizontal drilling, and you're not gonna dig up the whole thing? Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding. I can confirm that with our construction folks. I don't want to commit to that. I do know in some cases, we do have to do some, some trenching. Um, there's, there's a lot of variables that go into that, um, but that is something that I can, um, ask and confirm if this particular site is gonna be just a directional bore drilling. Or, or, or a trench going across there. So I can certainly find that out for you guys.
And it'd be important across that sidewalk.
Anything else, Scott? I'm not good for that. Okay. All right, so Richard, then we're gonna move on to number three, and Attorney Man Cuso, kind of, we touched on that. Todd Duels talked about the applicant should provide a construction phasing plan and coordinate with the town regarding space requirements within the parking lot. Need for any special equipment for construction of the proposed improvements. And within the town, Shelley, that would be. The town supervisor, the building inspector, probably work with the building inspector. John Lundbeck. When you, when you phase this out, and then John will work with, with the town supervisor and the town clerk and. And, uh, just making sure people are parked out of the way and when the equipment comes in and things like that.
Sure, yep, makes sense.
Thanks. Uh, number four on this, the plans provided with the application are stamped preliminary. Final plans issued for construction should be provided to the town and include a New York professional engineer stamp. You'll get that to the town before construction. That'll be part of the. Approval. All right. It appears. Elevation sheet A-two, that the existing cell tower will not be extended, and only a set of antennas are proposed to approximately eighty-nine feet. Above ground level, compound improvements, including ice bridge and equipment platform will be. Will all be contained within the existing fence lease space. However, both power and fiber will be run outside the compound, which will require restoration of the existing site to the town building and. Existing site to the town building inspector and engineer satisfaction. The applicant should provide more details for both conduit installation between the overhead pole. And the monopole as well as restoration details for town property. Applicant should explain how the conduit will be installed below the town library pedestrian walkway. And you did already hit on that, and that would be horizontal boring.
Sounds like I'm gonna verify that.
Let me, let me get some more detail. I can, I can certainly ask our construction manager and pose that question to them. Um, I don't want to commit to anything. Like I said, there are certain cases that dictate a trench necessary. There are certain cases where we can get by with, with much less intrusive than that. I don't know the exact plan for this particular installation, but I can certainly ask that question, find out that information, and get you more detail on that.
I would hope that you wouldn't be. Uh, going and digging up the sidewalk. That have to be poured under, at least for that.
Just for my. From my understanding, as I look at the drawings here. Is that right directly behind the building there? Is that a sidewalk that runs directly behind? I see over by the parking lot where the parking spaces are, but then directly behind the building, behind the compound there. Is that also a sidewalk that runs behind the building that you guys have?
Sidewalk.
Okay, that's all sidewalk there. Okay. All right, yeah, no, I, I totally understand the concern. I'll get you some more detail on what exactly happened there. That, that's no problem at all.
Entrance to the library.
Yeah, that's the entrance to the library, one of the entrance. There, there is another access to the library, and that'll just have to be coordinated with the library, and if there's any, uh, signs that need to be. That walk can't be used, you know, for a certain period of time. Uh, Richard. For just a second, I'm gonna ask, we have our town board liaisons here, and I'm gonna ask them a question. Um, Ryan and Phyllis, the, um, the town property itself here, we, we talked to the building inspector, but Mark David, doesn't Mark have something to do with the overall facilities? Or is that just maintenance, no problem?
He does with the parking lot.
Yeah, but that's it.
Okay.
Anything else would be the, John, John Fruit takes care of the building itself.
Inside, yeah.
Yeah.
Inside, so it, so we are, it'd be between the supervisor and the building inspector to make sure that the grounds, okay. All right, thank you, Richard, for hanging on. I just wanted to clarify that. All right. Number six, the town may require a letter of credit for site restoration to be submitted. Prior to issuance of a building permit, Crown Castles should coordinate with the town attorney, town engineer, and the town building inspector regarding the acceptance of letter of credit. Number seven, the proposed disturbance for the project should be included on the EAF. It appears that disturbance will be below the one acre threshold for commercial, and therefore, a SWIP for quality and quantity is not required. However, the applicant will need to follow all New York State D E C Blue Book best practices for erosion and sediment control during and after construction. Number eight, applicant should provide the town CEO with building plans for review and approval prior to issuing a building permit. The issuance of a letter of credit for restoration of town property due to the installation of antennas, equipment, and other utilities as recommended. The applicant should provide a restoration estimate for review by the town engineer, town attorney, and the building inspector. I guess let's stop there because the letter of credit now is mentioned twice, and I'm gonna. Pull on the town attorney here. Is that something that we will be asking for? And at what point does the value get set on that?
Yeah, what's the amount?
So I would say during the, uh, post, post-approval, pre-building permit issuance phase, when they're going through a restoration plan and a phasing plan in terms of the construction. Part of that will necessitate calculating what the restoration cost will be, and that would be the amount of the letter of credit, which would be agreed upon between the applicant and. And the town, um, and I suspect to some of the questions that, uh, Mr. Warner had raised about, you know, horizontal drilling, are they actually gonna do? Boring, is are they gonna excavate it? Are they gonna move things? That's gonna all tie to what the restoration cost is gonna be.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions on that, Richard, with, uh, asking for a letter of credit? Or? Concerns?
Yeah, I, I think it all, it makes sense. I think the letter of credit, I've heard that termed as an escrow payment, uh, in the past. I, I think we're talking about the same thing there. Um, a lot of that, again, we're, we're kind of circling back to is gonna, you know. We want to understand what exactly the, the direction of bore or that, those connections, what all that entails. So, um, it, it makes sense.
All right, and then on to number nine, uh, final drawing should be signed by a licensed New York engineer, and again, that will get taken care of, I'm sure. And you'll submit that to the town. Um, is there any other comments from the board to add to Puff Harbor to the town engineer?
The one thing of. Is, uh, is there anything that has to go towards this for remediation when the, say, the tower is taken down? Or is that taken care of by the original leasing, the first cable? Do you know?
I don't know where it would be.
So, so Richard, what Chairman Sweet is asking, it's something I asked, uh, was gonna ask also, um, was. In our telecommunications zoning laws, we have a bond that, um, is required for the tower. And, um, we're just wondering if that bond needs to be updated to add additional equipment. Um, value for removal or whatever. And that's something that I guess the town attorney can work with us on and look at the original bond and, and figure out if that needs to be updated.
Do you know what year? This predates my tenure. Uh, do you know what year the town approved the original installation?
I was on the board, and it would have been late nineties. On the town board. Late nineties.
Ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, I mean, would I, yeah, I mean, we can, we can, let's, let's discuss this when we get later on in the process.
Okay, because, you know, we want to make sure things are covered.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so. We've got, uh, from the Rush Conservation Board review of Crown Castle. We reviewed the above-named application and do not find any aspect of the project to significantly impact environment. So they get to say. Okay, the Rush Fire District with the Rush, well, the Board of Fire Commissioners. Application fourteen P, Crown Castle's, uh, special permit in site plan approval. Fifty-nine seventy-seven, Eastern Red Road, purpose installation of antennas and actual return and ground equipment. After review of the above application, the Board of Parkers have no issues or concerns with the application as written. And we have from Monroe County Planning.
I'm sure they just.
They answered that as if it was a use variance because.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, I know that.
To development.
So, yeah, so it shouldn't be. Okay, so, um. So it's a section of municipal law, section two thirty-nine, um, zoning. And then, as you said, briefly reviewed by Monroe County Department of, uh, and Planning. So. It's a special use permit as far as we're concerned. They thought that it was something different, but, um, I think that they all kind of came in like.
Yeah, there was, there's a number viewer working there.
Okay. Their comments, New York State law has specific legal requirements for granting a use variance for the, was found, and again. Their state town or village. In preparation of hearing the patient variance. So that's all there really is.
He used to have a special use permit, right?
Yes. Okay, subject attached file. Wireless antenna installation, Monroe County Development Review Committee, uh, has reviewed the subject application and had the following comments to be made addressed prior to submission of the final plans of approval. One. Plan approval by Monroe County Department of Health. Yeah. How public health is not required. Uh, Monroe County Department of Transportation. The project is not set to Monroe County Department to send, uh, transportation for review, obviously, because. This agency does not have jurisdiction in the requirements of the project. Monroe County Department Environmental Services, this project was not sent to Monroe County Environmental Services. Nation. With this verify that there's no legal requirements. Okay, New York State Department of Transportation, this project was not sent to the Department of Transportation. So that's pretty much all that they've got on that. And go around to board members. Scott, do you want to start? Yeah, I got a pretty general question about who's applying, who's, uh, who are the other customers on the tower? And who's at risk if something goes wrong, like, uh, somebody else's cable is nicked or damaged underground, that sort of thing. So if I understand this, Crown, uh, obviously, the town owns the land, and I presume that is leased by Crown Castle. And Crown Castle is the owner and installer of the cell tower, am I correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, there are other customers on the tower, obviously, beyond Dish, I presume?
Yes, there are.
Okay. If, if something does go wrong and during the installation, a cable is damaged or something falls down on somebody else's equipment. Uh, how does that work? Are, are, is Crown Castle responsible for all of the maintenance and, uh? The effectiveness of the equipment that's there? How does that work?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we are. And we've got, you know, phone numbers on, uh, there should be a phone number, a big plaque right on the gate and everything out there. Um, that has a line directly to our network operations center in case anything happens like that. And obviously, if something happens during installation or anything like that, our construction managers and our folks will be on site at that time to, to, you know, take responsibility for that and, and get whatever needs to be rectified and, and fixed up.
It's kind of self-limiting problem here because if Crown Castle is overseeing this project and something goes wrong, it's Crown Castle who suffers the consequences and has, and has to fix them. Which makes me feel good, okay. And then that was my only question.
All right. Um, so I had, I guess I had a little bit more questions.
Well, I actually do have something on EA, but I don't know if we're gonna go through that later.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Um, so John Man Cuso, again, I had a question because we have a special permit application, and then we have a site plan. Application, and the information supplied to us really doesn't. Answer all the questions of a standard site plan. And I understand it's an existing tower, existing land use, there's no additional footprint really being added. Do we? Somehow tie the previous, the, the, the site plan application from way back when to this application so that at least the two can go together? Because there was, there were some questions on there as I went through about, um. You know, the, the adjoining properties with neighbors and tax count numbers and things like that, that we normally would put on a site plan or not in, in these notes. And rather than have them redo everything, can we just tie it to this somehow?
Yes. So there probably is a couple of ways to do that. The first would be to incorporate in some aspect of any resolution recitation into the prior approvals that were issued by the town. Which presumably are site plan and special permit approval that should exist. The other option would be to condition any such approval by this board on faithful, you know, compliance and conformity with any preexisting approval that were issued by the town, any conditions that may exist. In those prior rules, some, some recognition to incorporate, I think to your point. Mr. Warner is to incorporate some reference to make sure that by issuance of this approval, there isn't any supersession or. Change to what was done by the prior planning, planning board, if I understand.
Okay. Thank you, that, that did answer, and that made, that made a heck of a lot easier, because otherwise. We would have had to table it and they would have had to go through all that, all that work, and I saw, I see no reason to do that because it's preexisting. Okay. Again, a town question for the bond, we talked about that, we're gonna wanna make sure that's updated. In the, in that prior approval or in our, in our. Site plan approval, it talks about an annual inspection and maintenance, so Richard on the dish. Do you do annual maintenance on your antennas or is this something that you and Crown Castle and whatever other? Co, co-locators, you hire a firm to come in and check it once a year and give everybody an annual report, how, how does that work in your business?
There are, there are stipulations in terms of the, the frequency of how often towers need to be inspected as a whole. TIA reports, they, they basically, it's a whole rundown, a whole gamut of, of making sure that everything is, is up to snuff and there aren't any safety concerns. With, with the tower, I guess, like you said, an inspection, and that happens periodically, the frequency, the frequency. Of which depends on the type of cell tower, whether it's a monopole, a self support tower. I can look that up for you and find out when the last inspection was done, I can tell you, we've got a lot of detailed records on, on that sort of stuff and. That is well tracked in our, in our database to make sure that, that, obviously, we want to be compliant with that because it's a pretty big deal to make sure that everything is. Is, you know, kosher in terms of safety, so there is a cadence to that, that our engineers stay on top of, our construction folks go out and inspect. Sometimes they bring along third party firms too, if it's something where we need to get additional engineering done, but that is something that we, we stay on top of.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. I have a couple more here, so bear with me, you do have post generator, new generator, you know, within fenced in area. Explain, that's only for power outages, I'm thinking of the amount of noise it might generate and if that could be an issue down the road, I'd just rather address it now than later.
For this scope of work, there is no generator. There are a couple of equipment cabinets, that's just to house equipment at the base of the tower, that's a five by seven raised platform. It's not new concrete or anything, it's, it's an exist, not existing, but it's a, it's an elevated platform that sits just up, just above the ground. And there are two equipment cabinets that will be housed on that for Dish, there won't be any noise or anything from those. But there's no, no generator is, is proposed for this couple.
I was, sorry, that's my, I was looking at a proposed Dish wireless generator plug. And, and I guess I, I saw a generator and it just triggered that question.
Now, that's, that's certainly a fair question, and I, I assume that's probably putting in the connections now when they go ahead and do this, so that down the road, if that's something that. That Dish wants to entertain, the connections will be there, that is, that's an assumption that I'm making based on the drawings.
Okay. Last main question I have is the cable that goes into Monopole. And this is again to educate me, so the cable is going to be routed in on a pole up to just above the antennas or near the antennas. How does that cable exit the Monopole through an existing port or is a new port put in, and that, I was just questioning about the, if that changes the structure of the Monopole?
It does, and that should be included on the structural report, that's really the most important. Document that would incorporate that porthole, typically I've seen on other installations, now it's not noted here on these drawings, and I apologize for that, I can see the reason for the question. On other sets of drawings, I've looked at sheet A two, that elevation drawing, and it will clearly call out a porthole. Being cut, it clearly says down below that the, the cables are gonna be routed inside the pole. So that clearly signifies that we're gonna need a, a, a porthole at the eighty nine foot level to, to make those connections and everything. Typically, it's a six inch by nine inch hole. It, it's nothing, it's significant, nothing significant, I, I say, but at the same time, it's something that needs to be incorporated on the structural analysis. I don't have a copy of the structural in front of me, but I'm sure that it was, it was included on that, that's something that is, you know. The, the question has been proposed, can we? Structurally route a cable inside a pole or do we have to band it to the outside, that's a question that our engineers, you know, face when they're looking at. At different sites and different projects like this, so in this particular instance, obviously, it was structurally sound to go inside the pole. And I apologize if that's not called out on the drawings on that sheet A two.
It is, it does show, it says exiting exit port at a hundred feet, and that's, that was the question I had is, so you're going above the antenna and then back down.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I'm looking at eighty nine feet, you're right, up above it, we are exiting at a hundred feet, they do have that there, that is a porthole that comes out. So again, that's, there's structural reasons for that, why they're going up a little bit higher there and, and coming down. And, and if you would like, I can certainly get more detail on that.
I just, I guess that's why I'm on verification, so you're not gonna be. Installing or cutting in another exit portal, you're gonna be using the one at a hundred feet and then coming back down to the antennas.
Correct, yep, correct. I'm sorry, and I apologize, I looked at that and I was looking at eighty nine feet and, and. I clearly didn't look good enough to see the hole at a hundred feet there, I apologize.
Good, and then I'm learning about cell towers, so.
Yep. Okay, Don Sweet, Chairman, I've got two concerns and one is the, the boring underneath the sidewalk, I would hope that you wouldn't. Your group wouldn't be like trying to dig through the sidewalk and be boring under. Library, and my other concern was. When and if the tower is, is to be taken down, how we get, how we're covered with another, the bond or whatever the money to. To take that, like a reclamation. You know, I guess we're gonna figure that out.
Well, second question, the code already contemplates the bond, and so we can address that through the updating of the bond.
Yeah.
As part of this approval, the first one. Really, I guess, is a question for the applicant, I mean, would you be willing, if the board is concerned about disturbance of the walkway, would you be able to? Accept any condition that would entail using horizontal drilling in that area to ensure there's no disturbance of, of the walkway, is that what you're concerned with, Chairman?
Yes, it is.
I, I would want to talk with, with two folks on that, I want to talk with our construction manager to get more detail on what exactly our, our plans are. To, to nail that down with more detail, we're showing on the drawings the connections that are gonna be made, they're going underground, but let me get some more detail on that, and secondly, I would want to talk to our legal team. To see exactly how that process works, to make sure that, that I don't commit to something that. I shouldn't be, so, so those are two conversations that I can certainly have in mind, and, and I'll say, I certainly understand the concern, the sidewalks right there. You, you guys, the libraries right there, you don't want to have that be a big mess or anything, which I totally understand, so. I, let me do some, some asking around, get some more detail for you, and I can provide an update on, on that portion of it.
Okay, thanks. Nope, that's I'm all set. Steve, I'm sure, good. Attorney, you have anything to add?
Nothing except what's already been discussed through the course of the meeting.
Our two town liaisons?
I'm good on my end, thank you.
Anything else to discuss on this? Close the public hearing for.
Richard, is there, is there anything else that you would like to add?
I, I think for now, I'm, I'm good on my end, I think, I think for now, I'm, I'm all set.
We shouldn't take, shouldn't take granted, maybe somebody's on Zoom that would like to. Speak.
Shelley, is there anybody in the audience? That would like to speak, their hand up.
There's no chat and there's no hand up.
Okay, nice. Okay, so we'll close the application. Two thousand and twenty one fourteen P, Crown Castle. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, I, I just want to ask, in terms of next steps or where we go from here. Do you guys have, like, what's the, the next steps in the process, just so, just for my own. Planning purposes.
So, so what we'll do is we'll discuss it as a board here briefly, I think, this evening, and if we're ready to. Vote on it and. Do preliminary approval for a special permit and site plan approval, we'll get that done tonight, probably with some conditions. They have to come back with some information, like you said, with the horizontal boring and just get us. Some updated information, but I think we're, we'll get our work done here tonight, and then once you get that information back to the town, you can go ahead. And work with the building inspector on the next.
Sure, okay.
That sounds reasonable.
So the, the next step would be the secret review first. Then.
Richard, you're fortunate that you're the only application on the agenda tonight, if there were others, would do public hearings on all of those and then cycle back to our discussion on your application. You don't have to wait, but you're welcome to, and you don't have to wait for anybody else.
Okay, I can hang out for a little while if that's, okay.
Yeah, you can hang out, you're more than welcome, yeah, to a public meeting.
I will email it to you this evening, so you'll have everything that we discuss in writing.
Okay, okay, great.
All right, so on the secret, Scott, you said you had some questions.
Yeah, if we go through the short PAF. Nothing of major consequence, but I think there are some factual errors. If you go down to item. From five at the bottom of the first page, it's actually commercial.
Yeah.
Not rural, non agricultural. Two eight C on the third way down, the second page. It says, are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? The fact is, it doesn't make any difference for this project, however, our big pedestrian pathway and bicycle trail is pretty close to it, and that's Lehigh Trail, so that should be a yes. And the, the only other I have is, is not something that I think we can change. When it comes to a question, that's number twelve B, is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites? In the New York State Historical Preservation Office, ship oh, archaeological site inventory, and I know you use the, the mapper and it indicated a yes. Does anybody have an idea what that is?
I, if you give me some time, I could try to look that up on the New York State Chris system.
Automatically?
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't in either.
I would guess it's probably Indian relics along the, the edge of the creek.
That would be my. Creek and then on the adjacent side of the creek.
Yeah.
Was there a settlement over there on the flat?
I know the buffer for that archaeologically sensitive zone is quite large. So what is showing here? So in Phase one A and one B cultural resource investigation was undertaken for the proposed Rush Town Hall library revitalization building project. I don't know when that occurred or where that study is. So I really can't comment on it, I would, I would. Generally speaking, in terms of disturbance of any archaeologically sensitive areas, given the nature of this improvement, the area that is in question has already been disturbed. Obviously, as it pertains to that little area where they would be trenching or, you know, horizontal drilling. So I don't know that there's anything beyond that area, because the, the survey actually encompasses the entire town. Campus, not simply this little area.
And, and I guess I was here when, when all the, the reef rehab got, that was all regraded, dug up out, I mean. That's been disturbed six times over in the last twenty years, so. For what they'll be coming from the utility pole and hopefully horizontal boring to the, to the cabinets.
I just.
I see very little disturbance. Are you all right with that answer?
Anything else on that?
All right, so John, now we're gonna go through the part two, the impact assessment.
Yep, that's correct.
All right, so this is part two, to be completed by the lead agency, answer all following questions in part two, using the information contained in part one. And other materials submitted by the project sponsor otherwise available to the reviewer, when answering the questions, the reviewer should be guided. By the concept, have my responses been reasonable? Have been reasonable considering the scale and context of the proposed action. So the answering these, the following questions, either no or small impact may occur or moderate to large impact may occur. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
Let's say no, no.
I guess just blurt it out forward, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of wire?
No, no.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action, number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate and, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Number seven, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? That's part A.
No.
That'd be no. B, public, private wastewater treatment utilities.
No.
The septic system for the town hall is. Behind the library.
Is it behind the library or the?
I don't know the answer. Yeah, I mean, I doubt it's out there where the sidewalk. Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
Number nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Wetland, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna.
No.
Number ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? Number eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And then, John, we do part three also.
Yeah, so part three, in, in terms of your questions for part two, I don't believe I heard you answer moderate to large impact on any of them.
That's correct.
So there. So there. You would need to explain why a particular element may or will not result in a significant adverse impact or any moderate to large. So if you don't have any reason to explain those situations. Then you would need to make a determination significance at the bottom, which is one of two. Either that, there is the potential for one or more potentially larger significant adverse impacts. You would then check that box, and that's a positive declaration. We go into a full environmental impact statement. Analysis, or you check the box if there is no significant adverse impacts, you would check the negative declaration box.
Alright, so let's see, so I'll read, I'll read the second one, because I'm pretty sure that's where we're going to go, and we'll let the board decide. So, check this box if you have determined based on the information and analysis above. And any supporting documentation that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. So.
Scott? Yeah, absolutely. You might might want to just make a statement, because there is this yes under the archaeological site. That there is no disturbance, there is no new disturbance that could affect any archaeological site.
So we're going to put that under part three.
Yep. You can just write out exactly like that.
Just an explanation. Since the since the box is checked, yes.
So the way I wrote it out, no new disturbance on historical or archaeological land. Everybody okay with that? Alright, so with that, we're done with this.
Signing data.
Yeah, it's going to need to be formally approved as part of any resolution, so that's the next step as part of the consideration of this. I guess I'll turn it over to the board for deliberations on how it wants to proceed. I do have some additional thoughts on some of the items we talked about that are not, that have not been proposed. That I think would probably be best accomplished by conditions, but they can be accomplished in other manners. The board needs to gather further information, but it can be done a couple of different ways.
So we're going to do the seeker first. And then, once we get down, then we'll add those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're reading this?
Yeah. Okay.
So this is the secret part first.
Well, John said it's all built in. And then what we'll do is we'll add conditions at the end of what the.
Okay, this is Crown Castle Special Permit and Site Plan Resolution. Whereas the planning board of the town of Rush has examined applications twenty-two-one twelve P. And twenty-two-one fourteen P submitted by Crown Castle, the applicant requesting site plan and special permit approval for the installation of antennas. Ancillary tower and ground equipment onto existing cell tower with no change to structure height or ground space. Located at fifty-nine seventy-seven East Henyard Road, Rush, New York. And whereas the property is located in a C C that's Commercial District of the Town Zoning Law. And whereas the planning board has examined the application maps and other materials filed with the application. Including the short environmental assessment form and all having reviewed all current plans and reports, including comments and reports from town professional staff. The public and other interested and involved agencies associated with the application. And whereas the public hearing on the application was held on December twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. And notice was pasted as required by law. And whereas all persons at the hearing desiring to speak on the matter were heard, all correspondence on the matter was read. And all comments and statements that were received during the public hearing and or at other duly held meetings of the planning board were considered by the planning board. And now therefore be it resolved that the planning board determines that this is an unlisted action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Article eight of the environmental conservation law and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto at six N Y C R R. Part six seventeen as amended collectively secret. And it is further resolved that the planning board has considered the significance of the project by reviewing and examining the E A F. Including completing the analysis for parts two and three of the E A F for the project. Which E A F is hereby approved, adopted and incorporated herein by reference. And it is further resolved that the planning board has considered the criteria set forth in six N Y C C R. Section six seventeen point seven C thoroughly analyzing the identified areas of relevant environmental concern. And hereby finds for the reasons set forth in the completed E A F that the project will result in no significant adverse environmental impacts. Requiring the preparation of an environmental impact statement and thus issues a negative declaration for the project. And it is further resolved that upon consideration by the planning board of the factors set forth under section one twenty-sixty-nine B. Of the Town Zoning Law, the planning board grants a special permit based on the following findings. The proposed use complies with requirements of the Town Zoning Law. The granting of special permit and installation of antennas, ancillary tower and ground equipment onto existing cell tower. Will not endanger public health, safety or general welfare of the community. The project proposes no change to structure height or ground space and compound improvements, including ice bridge and equipment platform. Will all be contained within the existing fenced leaf space. Three, the cell tower is already existing and in harmony with existing development and will not discourage appropriate development or use of adjacent land. Or impair the value thereof. And it is further resolved that upon consideration by the planning board of the factors set forth under section one twenty-sixty-nine B. Three of the Town Zoning Law, including the findings set forth above. The location and arrangement of the existing cell tower facilities and buildings on the property. Adequacy type and arrangement of sufficient buffer between this and joining lands and protection of adjacent properties. The planning board grants site plan approval. And it is further resolved that site plan and special permit approval is granted and subject to the following conditions. One. No work is to commence until the applicant obtains a building permit from the town of Rush. Two, the applicant must meet any other applicable town building and inspection requirements. Three, the applicant shall obtain all the other necessary local, state and federal permits and approvals required for the project. Four, the applicant shall provide a construction phasing plan subject to review and approval by the town engineer and town building inspector. Including coordinating with the town regarding space requirements within the parking lot. Need for any special equipment for construction of the proposed improvement and minimizing of disturbance of the town library pedestrian walkway. Five, the applicant shall provide a site restoration plan for disturbance of any town property. Subject to review and approval by the town engineer and town building inspector. Six, the applicant shall provide an irrevocable irrevocable letter of credit in the name of the town of Russia's beneficiary. In an amount approved by the town engineer and town building inspector, sufficient to complete site restoration activities as a result of the project. To secure the applicant's performance of its obligations. Seven, the applicant shall meet all requirements of the town engineer as indicated in town engineer's letter dated December seven, twenty-twenty-one. Eight, the applicant is prohibited from making any change to structure height or ground space of the existing cell tower facility.
So I have three others that I drafted. By the planning board. Number nine, the applicant shall comply with all applicable terms and conditions of the original town approvals of the existing cell tower facility. Number ten, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of section one twenty-sixty-four F. Of the Town Zoning Law, including without limitation, section one twenty-sixty-four F six. Requiring the applicant to provide to the town an updated bond or other form of security to be determined by the town in an amount sufficient. For the faithful performance of the terms and conditions of this approval in the Town Zoning Law. And number eleven, final plans issued for construction should be provided to the town and included New York Professional Engineer stamp. Subject to review and approval by the town engineer and town building inspector. That was another condition in the letter that was a was mentioned by Tom.
Okay, and I'd like to add, so under our code. Section ten in the telecommunications code is, how do we add for the annual inspection maintenance? Make sure that that is complied with.
Yeah, that's actually a town requirement, right? That is annual inspection and and some sort of statement.
Right, and I don't know, I mean, who, that would go to the town supervisor, I suppose, or the the guy go to the building inspector, that's the liaison.
How is that F ten?
F ten, yeah. Yeah, but would when documentation comes in like that, is it the town clerk, the town supervisor?
Isn't it updated right on the on the structure that it's been inspected as a requirement? But I think that the the owner or the owner of the tower has to post that the. Unit has been inspected on a yearly basis, that's a requirement. So I don't, it's just a question of whoever goes out there and say, yeah, it's off the date, or no, it's not, it's not in code. So that would be the building inspector or our.
Well, building. The town supervisor probably would be the ultimate responsibility in putting that on an annual checklist. I would say.
It's like an elevator inspection, you know.
Well, so so the way number ten, I got the right one here, the way number ten reads. The applicant, its successors or assigns shall file annually with the town. On the anniversary date of the granting of the special permit by the planning board, a written report of a duly qualified independent consultant. Certifying that the applicant, its successors or signs are complying with its maintenance and inspection procedures, record system. And that the telecommunications tower and accessory facilities or structures is not a hazard or a threat of a hazard to the health and safety of the public.
That would be.
So a written, a written, a written report to the town supervisor. So I guess we'll just, I'd like to add it in there. So, John, what number were we at? Eleven?
Would you want it to be standalone, or do you want me to add it in under ten, since I had referenced sixty-four F? I could put a subsection two in there. One was the bond.
Yeah, one was the bond, and then two, two would be the annual inspection report.
F ten, so I'm gonna say, I'm gonna.
Now, there's three other co-locators in there, right?
Small two, F ten regarding the filing of an annual report.
So, so what do we want them to do? To demonstrate past compliance? What are we looking for?
I think it's prospective. This would be prospective moving forward to reiterate the.
And this isn't, and this is right, this is the owner of the tower, this is Dish, this is Crown, has got to supply the annual report.
The applicant.
Yes, yeah, the applicant, right.
I wonder if the town is getting.
Yeah, I wonder.
Updates now on what's there. Co-locators.
Right.
I think, I think. I'd feel better if we had a requirement to demonstrate that they've complied in the past as well as continuing in the future. They've never done it. It's just a matter of saying whether they did or not, proving it.
For, if I could chime in real quick, the one thing I just want to add, I'm looking at a copy of an inspection report that is filled out annually for this particular tower. Just pulling some documents as we were talking. So, my assumption, and I can dig into this more and look on our end, is that this copy of this report has been been supplied to someone at the town. On an annual basis, you know, as as part of record keeping and making sure that, you know, all of that sort of thing is is tracked. I've got inspection comments and dates going back all the way to. Two thousand and seven in this particular report and detailing each yearly visit. So we've got those records on hand. If if they have not been supplied, it's I'm sure they have, but it's something we can obviously supply if it's something.
Do you have any indication on that report, who it was furnished to the town? Was it directed to the clerk, the supervisor, or was it just an internal?
I can find that out. On this particular report, it doesn't say who this was sent to. It just has the name of the person, the inspector who who performed the inspection. I'm sure that. I can find that though. Let me make a note, and I can, I can look that up. I just don't have it in front of me right now.
I I guess let's add into that, John, let's just say that the reports, if he's got them back to two thousand and seven. Per Scott, that past reports dated dating back two thousand and seven be updated to the town. Both to the town clerk, who is the registrar of records for the town, and copy the town supervisor. Because heaven forbid there ever be a tragedy, we want to make sure that the town has those annual inspection reports to go back on to cover ourselves.
Okay. So I have two revisions at your request, Mr. Warner, to condition ten, I'm going to read it in its entirety again. The applicant shall comply with the requirements of section one twenty-sixty-four F of the Town Zoning Law, including without limitation. One, section one twenty-sixty-four F six requiring the applicant to provide the town an updated bond or other form of security. To be determined by the town in an amount sufficient for the faithful performance of the terms and conditions of this approval in the Town Zoning Law. And two. A section. One twenty-sixty-four F ten regarding the filing of an annual report. With the town evidence in compliance with its maintenance and procedures and record system. And that the telecommunications tower and accessory facilities or structures is not a hazard or a threat of a hazard to the health and safety of the public. So that's a revised ten, and then new new number twelve. Past inspection reports dating back to two thousand and seven shall be provided to the town clerk and town supervisor.
And and inspection reports from this point forward. Make sure that, I guess, let pass, pass. That's under ten, so is under number ten, does it say who those reports are directed to in number ten?
With the town, but I can be more specific.
Be more specific, both to the town clerk and to the town supervisor, because again, the town clerk is the registrar of records here, keeper of records. So let's, that that way it can be, who's ever responsible, whoever town clerk is going forward, you know, they they can keep these records.
Okay.
Under five, which talks about the restoration plan for disturbance.
Yep.
I would like to add a bullet there that there shall be no disturbance of the library sidewalk or sidewalk to the library.
Well, I guess I, if if there is disturbance, it should be fully repaired to the extent to original condition.
I like my statement, but.
Well, I. How about, can we add that we strongly prefer that they horizontal bore under the sidewalk?
Exactly.
So not to disturb the the existing sidewalk.
Number four talks about the library.
So if it can't be four.
Number four dealt with the minimizing disturbance of the pedestrian walkway.
Sidewalk's four feet wide. They they bore across roads, they bore across the Erie Canal. Right, they're putting a conduit of maybe an inch or a couple inches under the sidewalk.
You're right, that's the right place to put it, but I would. I would say there will be no disturbance, and if that can't be done, then they come back and we talk about. Did you rip a pantry? You'll never get it to, I mean.
I agree, they'll never match, so, so. So, I mean, it probably comes down to money, and and do do we just say, do we just say that we? We ask for horizontal boring?
Yes.
I mean, it it exists, they they have the tools to do it.
So you probably want to further condition number four on the minimization disturbance through the use of horizontal.
So Scott, come up with what is for.
Well, as long as, as long as the assumption is that they will use horizontal boring, yeah, I can't, I can't imagine that we can ask for more than that.
If you ask for it in that condition, they have to submit the construction plans and the phasing plan. And the restoration to comply with the planning board's approval, and if it is inconsistent, they can't issue a building permit. So as long as you feel comfortable that your condition restricts that discretion on the part of the building inspector, so it has to be in the plan, then it can be done. But see that, again, that's the question, how restricted do you want to be, or do you want to give the building inspector the ability to be flexible? And review the construction plan to decide how much disturbance we're talking about.
I don't have a problem either way, I'll tell the board, but I do prefer horizontal boring, I would too, and and it'd be simpler for everybody. I I think.
What's acceptable along the side of the walkway?
You're gonna have to go from the pole.
I guess I don't know, I don't know how much space is there, because it looks like they're running right along parallel to the walkway once they.
Well, even if it's if it's not concrete brick, they could trench it, and just replay, I think it's gravel, in the in the fenced in area, it's gravel. Both pad, concrete pad, gravel.
It almost looks like they're traversing. Almost looks like they're traversing outside the fence and then, and.
I mean, I saw him put in a natural gas line shot at a farm. That is, they had to bore probably fifty, sixty feet, they put a two inch gas line through, and it was, and they and they did it. Like that, and it was done, yeah, so, so how do you want the wording on that for? I think John is asking, do you want it? Add horizontal boring to number four, or or that no disturbance, let them decide how they're gonna do it.
The four foot sidewalk, there shouldn't have to be, it it should be able to be boring. It's, it's not that difficult.
Alright, so what we 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 need wording, we need wording to add to four. That's where we're at.
Do you want to put it as no disturbance, like you said, and then see what they come back with?
Or disturbance, and we suggest horizontal boring.
Horizontal boring and see what they come back with.
Need to the full extent practicable is another term of art that I've seen in other, in other approvals, and so essentially what you're, what you're now putting. The burden on the applicant is they have to show to the full extent practical, they're gonna minimize the disturbance, and if they come in. Which which basically means that John Limbeck needs to be able to determine whether. Horizontal drilling is feasible or not, because if it's feasible, then to the full extent practical, it can be minimized. If it's not feasible, again, for whatever reason, then that's not practicable, so they have to come up with another.
Oh, right, and the word, no disturbance, section, means nothing, and snap your fingers and make it go under the sidewalk, there's gotta be some disturbance.
Some land.
Like you're, like Dan's saying, it could probably narrow cut. Concrete cut and then re.
It's still not been the same.
The restoration plan, the restoration plan was to do a a cut. With a with then, you know, patch it, that may not be acceptable to the to the town. Right, so the restoration plan may be the wholesale replacement of. The sidewalk, if they want to drill it in a certain manner, that's gonna disturb it more aggressively, right? That would be a restoration plan problem, but it really, again, it's a function of how much discretion does this board want to. Allow the building inspector to exercise to minimize that disturbance, or do you just want to stop it altogether?
How many days does this take to do?
He's had one to two days.
I feel like it's less of a disturbance than when they were working on the road with all those trucks.
What what I'm really talking about is anytime you cut concrete. I mean, you can drill and pin and that sort of thing, but you have the the possibility, first of all, to look different, and second of all, there's always a possibility that'll settle. And you'll have a tripping hazard there, it's very difficult to maintain long term.
So 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 come up with wording then for number four, that we can add in.
Well, I can, you want me to try to come up with something and you can accept it or reject it?
Yeah, I I I guess, I guess what we're looking at is minimal ground disturbance, but no disturbance to the sidewalk. No, no disturbance to the concrete structure of the sidewalk, minimal ground disturbance. Adjacent to the.
We all agree that we don't want to disturb the concrete at all, but.
Right, I think we all agree on that, let's let's, because the sidewalk, it might never go back correct.
The the, you know, trenching along the side of it, they'll 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 do that, that's.
Yeah, yeah, and if you have to go back and add some more cops on.
I guess it's just this, this where we don't want the concrete disturbed.
I would say, not not to the, no disturbance of the concrete or the covered, covered or the covering, whatever it's called. There's could be some concrete pillars in there, I didn't look at the structure.
It would be fair to say then. Phasing plan subject to review and approval by the tenant here, including coordinating with the town regarding base requirements within the parking lot. The need for any special equipment for the construction to propose improvement, and. Probably, well, I may, it may make sense to eliminate that from four and put it in five, then, if they're talking about site restoration. Because the phasing plan contemplates minimizing disturbance, but if you want to actually condition it entirely, it's not a phasing plan issue anymore. Because you're just, you're going to. You're probably gonna need to put the five then, that the shall provide a site restoration plan for disturbance of any town property subject to review. And approved by the town engineer and town building inspector, provided, however, that the pedestrian walkway.
The town library pedestrian walkway.
It shall not be, is disturb the right word, or are you looking for something else?
Compromised.
Shall not be impacted, that could be a number of things.
Disturbed work as well as anything.
So you just want to say, provided that the walkway shall not be disturbed.
So how can that be a restoration plan, when you don't want to touch it to begin with?
Well, they'll have to restore.
You're not gonna be restoring something you don't touch.
The land, the the ground on either side, you're still gonna have to.
Or underneath.
Yeah, we may, to counsel on Wickerham's point, maybe we just do this as a standalone, by itself. I would just put number, number thirteen, the the. The town, let's see, the town library pedestrian.
Remains undisturbed.
Walkway.
Follows our discussion better, if it's last.
I would just say it shall not be, it shall not be disturbed through through the installation of the underground. Underground. Fiber conduit?
Yeah.
I think there's a power line.
There's power and and fiber optics.
Utilities that should cover.
It looks like they're gonna have two bores on.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing that I don't know the answer to is, I don't know the rights of the utility companies into that area, so if they have easements. That would trump the towns, you know, again, if they have a right to disturb, they have the right to disturb, I don't know the answer, so. We can put the condition in, and the condition will apply to the full extent permitted by applicable law, so that's just something that may come up in the process, we'll have to deal with it. Okay, so condition thirteen, the town library pedestrian walkway shall not be disturbed through the installation of the underground.
I'll make, I'll second that motion.
Member McPherson. Member Werzer. Members Rock. Deputy Chair Werner. Chairman Sweet.
Alright, Richard, are you still on?
Okay, um, what do you want to look at first, the possible change of our meeting date?
Yeah. Yeah, we did, she did, she did the vote. So we're done. Yeah, so it wasn't on the agenda, but Amber has asked the board that we consider changing. Meeting dates because of conflict of other boards and. Meeting times, and she has sent a couple emails to the board, so. I guess.
We should discuss this, and I I guess.
Scott commented already on the first email, do you have anything else to add, Scott?
No, she she asked specifically about the fourth Tuesday of the month, then I I have no personal problem with that. My earlier comments stand that it means effectively a week longer for everybody to get. Information from the various agencies and and other boards. The downside is a week longer that applicants have to wait from the day they submit their application until we rule on it. But it's not a problem for me personally, anybody else?
Yes, I just don't understand, I mean, it's never ever been a problem, it's never been brought up. In the past, so I guess I. Be wondering who who's being impacted, why.
And I guess Jeff's good.
I kind of concur with what Rick is saying, I haven't heard of any conflicts at all, and then the last email I saw only referenced. The one concern which would affect two boards, so.
So I, so I read both emails. Multiple times, and then finally reached out to Councilman Corbin for clarification, and. I asked for. Examples of conflict with the conservation board to the planning board in the past, because. Years ago, I was on, I've been on the planning board multiple, multiple years, and this is my current go around, and. Never has there ever been an issue. Or a concern that's been expressed from the conservation board to the planning board that I'm aware of. That they didn't get information in a timely fashion. Or could get feedback back to us, and with that, you know, I I kind of went back into our comments just for this past year. And I looked at the comments that we get from the conservation board, and they're generally one liners. One from the fire district as well, but, you know, some of these Matthews and Fields on June third. Egg data sheet show drainage area. July first is, we have reviewed the above the application, the conservation board would like to see a Google Earth map that reflects the exact. Location of the overall project, you know, that's what they come back to us with. And as I went through. I I tried to have an open, or I do have an open mind, because I want to listen to Amber, and I want to listen, you know, does conservation board have a concern? So Amber did come back that the conservation board had a concern with the two thirty nine M coming back from. Monroe County, that sometimes they don't get it in time to review it.
They don't need.
Well.
It's not for them.
That's, that's where I'm going with this, we are the lead agency, that's our information, that comes to us, it's not for them. We're asking the conservation board, same as we're asking the fire commissioners and the egg, whatever boards we send it out to. We're asking for feedback and input, not for them to contemplate the 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 input. And so because we're the lead agency, the two thirty nine M is not necessarily for for the conservation board. Although they can review it if they want, but we're not looking for their input from the Monroe County, that's for this board to decide. You don't have to worry about me, so with that, and and then she said, well, there's a conflict with the library board. And because of the the day of the week that they have to meet, because they have to get their vouchers in. To get their bills paid, whatever, I'm like, well, I so I listened to her. But that doesn't have anything to do with our board, you know, the two boards operate independently. And they're not waiting for us to give them information to pay their vouchers, and so, so I'm not sure where it was all going. But the the the, I guess, supporting evidence is, I think things are going. Fine the way they're going, because I haven't heard otherwise, and with the planning board, there's a lot of players to this board. And it's not just the members of the board, but it's the town clerk's office, it's town attorney, town engineer, all involved. To make this board happen, and the timeframes are set, they've been set for thirty, thirty plus years, and they haven't changed. So with that, I I did listen to Amber, and and I I took it all into consideration. But I don't see the evidence here to go ahead and change the meeting, so that's that's the input I have. So I got, so why I did tell Amber is that we would take a vote as a planning board tonight, and then you would get back to her with our answer.
So I was wondering from our liaisons, if there was a problem, why didn't we hear from you guys? And, you know, because that's kind of the chain of demand.
We had a discussion on this a few meetings ago, Mrs. Corbin brought it to. At us asking. In in preparation for the organizational meeting in January, wanting to change the dates, and we. Heard from the clerk that these meeting dates are set on a particular time schedule, it has. Oh, it, people are like, everything that you just said, Jack, is what we discussed. And we decided that we had not heard from the planning board members, the zoning board members. The library board members, we hadn't even heard from the conservation board members, that there was an issue. The liaison for the conservation board never brought issues to our attention, so at that meeting, we said, I mean, we don't see any reason to change that. The meeting dates have been set in stone for many years, and they've been working, and we do, we did not have a. Clear enough reason to make a decision otherwise.
I have a quick question, who? If it was to be changed, who is it, would be a recommendation from us, or would it be the board? It would, the board would say, okay, from now on, this is.
Ultimately, the town board will make that decision.
Okay, so they can make it no matter what, while we.
Yeah, because they are the the key to the kingdom. Is the one who has brought this up with, I I don't know why. So, yeah, the town board ultimately will make the decision.
Can decide.
So I I did the rest of you get this from Lee Hetrick, basically, you know, his, I won't read it, if you guys have seen this.
It's his words, not mine, just asking you to send it.
So he's saying there's there's no conflict with their board and the boards that they work with. Anything else, or can we vote?
No, so I guess Shelley can just pull the board, and that way we say we voted on this. So we're pulling.
We should, almost even if it's informal, have some resolution, and I would say, we do not recommend the change, because. There's a lot of moving parts to the to the planning board input, the the goal long term has to been been to minimize the time from the applicant's submission. Until our hearing of the meeting, and we we don't understand or have not. We're unable to verify that there's a major conflict worth changing that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member McPherson. Member Werzer. Member Strah. Deputy Chair Werner. Chairman Sweet.
Any other new business or anything else we need to take care of? I've got a few things, okay, next month is twenty twenty two oh one P site plan. That is, I don't have the name of it here, but it's in our, yeah, Mano folder there. That was submitted, it's a relatively straightforward residential site plan that they've provided a full EAF. Has anybody gone back to them and said, we really want the short EAF? Not at this point, if not, Shelley, would you do that? Otherwise, we're stuck going through the long seconds phase there. Alright, another item is the planning board documents, we have the the new location, which is rather a strange name in the. Town code.
Because we couldn't add a new chapter, I worked with General Code, and she said, why don't you use that chapter? Because it's relatively, there's only one document there.
So I think we ought to understand what the plan is going forward, will, obviously, you're Shelley, you're gonna continue to put all the documents as you get them into that. I presume we will also continue to get the hard copies of the of the application.
This is basically because there was one board that wanted. This is basically because there was one board that wanted everything electronic all the time. So instead of just emailing every other day, different people.
Okay, I mean, frankly, I don't, I don't feel I need, uh, hard copies of all the individual sheets of all the agencies and that sort of thing. But I do want the hard copies of the application and particularly the site maps.
Absolutely.
You know, we, you can't look at them on a computer.
But those are there for your viewing pleasure.
Uh, the only other question is, would you, uh, would the board like Shelley to at least let us know when something goes into that website location? So that we know to go look for it.
Yes, I, I agree with that.
I will.
Is that okay? Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be every document, maybe every few days or something like that.
Reviews come at different times. But yes, I will do that going forward. I've been juggling the conservation board, so I have neglected everybody else, but that's because they needed electronic and hard and everything, so.
The last item I have, and, and maybe John Man Cusel can help with this. Earlier this month, there was a zoning application for an area variance of Cuca Studios on High Tech Drive.
Yes.
That wanted a, a shorter setback for a new building they're putting up. That new building, what, let's put this way, there were, this is the second major addition by that, by that company. And I'm glad they're expanding. That's wonderful. Uh, the first, the original building was four thousand square feet. The second addition was forty, forty-eight hundred square feet, so even bigger. That was a doubling. And that was probably back in uh, two thousand and three, based on the site plan that they had. Uh, and now they're asking for an addition of six thousand square feet. So the total increase from the original site plan of four thousand square feet is now of the three, almost four times as big as it started. My question is, they have a variance. Does that kind of change come before the planning board? There, there are questions around what their parking will be, how many employees they have now. They, they say that there's not gonna be a lot of new employees because it's mostly warehouse. But over those years from the original four thousand to the quadrupling, they probably add a lot of employees. So there's more parking, there'll be more parking lot.
The two gentlemen were here and they did not increase any employees. They just.
And they represented there's no employee, but it, I don't know that that's.
Well, see, but, but what happened with the first expansion? Was there a new site plan for that? My only point is that in the code, it says that there is, if there is a substantial change in a business, primarily meaning that it's used for a different purpose, not just an expansion. It has to come back to the planning board to be reviewed and any deficiencies in any other area can be reviewed at the same time.
So.
Now, we just did, we just did a site plan. We just did a site plan and we just did a special permit for a guy putting an antenna up here, right? But yet this quadrupling of a building maybe never come to the planning board. So is that proper? That's my question. Or is this handled by the building inspector?
So that's a question for me, probably not.
But are they doing anything different than what they were to begin with? I think they're doing the same business.
It could be.
They're just in a lot, you know, since this COVID situation and a lot of like boats not getting moved and things like that. I know for one thing that, um, you know, Home Depot is building their own storages. Like there's one in Rochester to like, it's a massive, oh, like warehouse in Henrietta where they're storing all their like refrigerators and everything where before they made the distributor bringing directly to the store when they sold them and now because they can't, they can't do, they can't like, can't come through and they, now they're gonna stockpile these things so they're, they're on hand. And maybe that's something that these guys are doing.
Well, it could be, but. So still, still a major expansion and, and since we don't know what happened with the first major addition and we don't know what happened, what's happening with the second one?
I'd probably start with pulling the file, Shelley. Let me see what exists and what doesn't. And then Scott, I will answer that question for you.
Thank you.
If one exists.
Okay, but I say homework because I gotta find it.
Yeah.
Good point. I, I wonder if he's done. That's it for me. Okay, so, uh, Dan Cornwall has contacted me twice. And he wants to do a lot line adjustment. And, um, you know, he claims that in every other town that, that he's done business with that it's an internal thing with the planning board. It's easy. And what we're gonna make him do is basically do like a, a new site plan. More or less. So, you know, he asked me again, you know, if the town, I guess, the town board, they have to vote and okay the, the change, you know, um, so have you liaisons or the town attorney, has, has anything been worked on that? Or, um, he was gonna contact you directly, I thought.
Yeah, I, I have brought it up on several occasions over the years to recommend the inclusion of a lot line adjustment procedure that could be exercised in the discretion of a building inspector. It's discretionary. So if he felt like a particular application that was not suitable for that process, it would get kicked out of the planning board for full approval. Um, that has not been acted upon, obviously, but it was a recommendation for a potential. But many, you are wrong. Many, many, many other towns have a lot line adjustment procedure because most of the time if it's a slight adjustment between two property owners that already own their lots, it's, it's really insignificant saying that the planning board does not.
He claims it's like ten feet.
Yeah. So that's really, I mean, that, that's up to the town board to take off. If you want to maybe renew that recommendation, Chairman, I can go back to the town board again and add it to their list.
Yes, please.
So, but would that be, um, if you want to make a formal request, put it in writing to the town supervisor? Oh, a memo? Asking for that and copying and all word covers. I mean, I would think that. Create a paper trail.
Yes, that's good.
That you've asked for this to be discussed.
We've done some supervisor now.
Yeah. You need to create a paper trail otherwise it can get forgotten.
Yeah, and, and my, my comment to that was, you know, I guess Dan's asked for this for a while or something. And so why not just come to the planning board and get it over with? You know, there's so many odd lots and site distance issues in this town because of the contour of the land and flag lots and things like that. Um, I don't see it as a bad, a bad thing coming in front of the planning board and just having a brief look. It'd be one meeting and it'd be over and done with. You know, town had issues with the, with the building inspector, the, the prior building inspector not doing this job and not even showing up to work from what I understand. And, you know, we, do we want to put that power in that department? I, 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 I appreciate John Limbuck right now, but we've had, you know, been burned, burned a couple of times here since I've been in town.
It's not really power, it's manpower because.
Well, it's, 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 it's authority and, and he, the building inspector is making a decision on behalf of the town that the town has to live with.
Right.
For a long time. And so that's why a lot line adjustment, I guess, I feel should still come in front of the planning board. That would be my, my take on it. That way you got a five member board taking a look at it.
And we don't have like a whole planning department that works at the town.
No, if we had a planning department with a full-time engineer, it'd be a different story. But we don't have that, so. All right. So with that, John, you're still on the hot seat. So in the conversation with Amber, Amber sent her original email in December. I didn't respond to it because I didn't exactly know how to respond to it because of this entire paragraph at the end of the email that's privileged and confidential and lays out basically, if you say something, you're, you're gonna get taken away out of the town of Rush forever and you'll never be heard from again. And I asked her, she says, well, you, you better ask town attorney because he asked for that to be put on the end of all communications.
Really?
So.
I don't have it on.
Well, that's what she said. She said, ask John. She said, John.
I don't have it online either.
Okay, so how do we, I, I know this town, town, town super, have you seen it?
No.
Oh, it's at the bottom of your emails too.
No, no, so, so, so my. Totally different thing on my, for my emails because I'm, I'm an attorney, so everything I'm disseminating may or may not include attorney-client privilege information. So I have a blanket disclosure on my communication.
So, so, so this, I mean, I believe I've seen this on the town. She asked me a question. Other people were CC'd on this, but I didn't know, am I allowed to talk about it or not? Privileged and confidential, this communication and any accompanying documents are confidential and privileged. They are intended for the sole use of the addressee. If you receive this transmission in error, you are advised that any disclosure, copying, distribution, or the taking of any action in reliance upon this communication is strictly prohibited. Moreover, any such disclosure shall not compromise or waive the attorney-client or other privileges as to this communication or otherwise. If you have received this communication in error, please contact me. So I didn't receive it in there, but boy, it puts a fear of God in you. Right. So, so what are you supposed to do? And she said, well, talk to John May, or I, I, she said, John Man Cusel said, put that on there or suggested to put it on there. And I said, fine, I'll ask him tonight. So, I mean, we're, as planning board members, if we're gonna get stuff like this from the town board, how do we react?
Yeah, let, let, let's talk about that in a privileged setting.
Okay.
Because that's the first I'm hearing about this. And so I just want to be sure I understand it. It's not something, something we need to discuss in a public meeting, uh, since I need to provide some legal advice on that.
All right.
But thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Yeah, we're going to the tech succession.
We can go, we can adjourn it.
We can adjourn.
Okay.
Because we'll, we'll come back and.
We're all done with everything else, right? We don't, nobody has anything to bring up. We'll, we'll adjourn. Can I have a motion?
Motion though for the business before the rush, uh, planning board, December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second. Roll.
Who second? I'm sorry.
I.
Member McPherson?
Aye.
Member Werzer? Member Strah?
Aye.
Deputy Chair Werner?
Aye.
Chairman Sweet?
Aye.